This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, I was trying to get that sent to you. Where the heck is save dick?
I'll bring it up here.
I have a copy.
Did you have it?
I do.
So you're ready for roll call Lloyd Colston? Brendan Jellings? Chris Johnson? Dwayne Eastman? Cody Richardson? Dottie Smith? And Tom Wheatley?
As I understand, we have two new members, one is Dwayne.
Dwayne was under the weather today, so.
Chris?
Chris.
Glad to be here.
So if you take a minute and if you have a little bit of minutes, you have a very mind, if you don't. When the minutes were first sent to you, they did not mention that in the meeting Sandy Randall, I asked Sandy Randall, we had to know whether he asked for help from the city to establish utilities in the sign. And Sandy representing Noah, and so Noah said they would not be asking for assistance. I felt that was important to have it in the meetings or in the future.
Yeah, so here it is.
So that was added, that's revision from what he was saying.
Move with the rule of change.
You have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? I'll think of something. We have a motion to open a public hearing.
Move with open to public hearing for the vacation of Ash Avenue. Second.
Motion to second. Signify with five. Don't you have something more?
Sure do. So what is being proposed today, Ash Avenue is currently not a through street. It goes from, it goes from 12th to 13th, but it does not continue on to 14th. So this is the area, and of course it's plotted in that area. So, so the request was filed by Michael Woods, who's here today to vacate. He's primarily concerned with the property that's next to his. He owns the property right here. So this was the area he was interested in. I went ahead and extended it the full length of that block. I felt that's probably pretty appropriate to go ahead and just do that whole block at once. So this is that, that track between the two, the two streets. Again, that's not, it's never been developed, the street was never built. In fact, at one point, a carport was mistakenly placed on the property as well. I don't know exactly when that was, I wasn't able to determine that. This would give Mr. Woods the opportunity to expand his property and it bring, bring that carport into full compliance. The technical advisory committee didn't have any concerns, there's no utilities in that street, there's some in the alley. Well, it's not really an alley. It's an easement that's behind the houses in that block. They would still have plenty of access to that. This area was plotted in 1926. Doesn't appear to be any other land use cases associated, there is a, a case there, but that's a, like a rezon or something that happened sometime in the far past. And again, the, the tack committee didn't have any comments. Notice was sent to everybody within at least the first 200 feet of the property. I didn't feel that any private injury, any, any private rights are, would be endangered by this in the area. So the area here, this is west from 13th and Ash, so here's the street sign and just a bunch of trees. There is that. Yeah, I think that's probably in, is this where you come up?
No, okay, we're gonna vacate that, we're vacating from that. The road extends from 15 to 14, on the other end.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said. So there's a carport that was in question right here. I believe this one's on the property, that garage. This is 13th Street looking to the south. So it's a gravel road, or I think it's, or is it paved? Here's looking at the other end, so again, pretty overgrown. There is a, a trailer on the property, but technically that's in the right way, it doesn't matter, it's, it's okay to park that there. Even in its current state. It's just another view, oh, this is, this is actually looking towards the north, but it's hard to see anything on there, but again, that's because it's so overgrown. But behind here is where the ball fields are, if you, if you could see through there. And this is, this is 14th Street looking to the south, it's a little bit smaller, but it's, it's also gravel. There is a house over, off to the right in this image, 1500 West Colorado, that would still have its access, even with this. But here's a portion of that plat, waverly place, that's what we're talking about, so it's just there, and see here, it, it would, this is where 15th, it would go on to 15th, and it doesn't go through there. It's never been plotted, even for that. So staff recommends approval of this request.
Yeah, I live on 14th Street, my dad built that house up there in 1971.
That's our dead end driveway right there.
I've lived here since 2003, and that's a single lane sand street, right around that road there.
That's our dead end driveway right there, he just, he just showed, and we have a dead end driveway, and we, and we have a road that goes around our house, and we have people coming out there all day long, going there. He put a street right there. You just saw it.
I'm Neil Morrison, this is.
Can I ask that we do one other time, because on hearing, and both of you are competing with my hearing.
You're right, I got excited, I'm sorry, I've been up there a long time.
So, you do want the property on there?
I am indeed, yes. 1640 North 14th. So we, we had up there, I've maintained that for, for 21 years, nobody comes up there, the city doesn't maintain. And it only gets graded once a year, when I have to call up a favor from a friend, my buddy and mine that works for the street. You guys don't do anything to that, it's a single lane road. So somebody comes down that road and we're trying to get home, we literally have to pull up in our neighbor's yards. So there's no way to enlarge the road, and I'm not gonna give you any more talk, you're not gonna put a two lane up there because of me. I'd get my ass conceded.
You're 1640 North?
North 14th, yes ma'am.
And what was your name again?
Neil Morrison.
We have to put up cameras, we have game cameras, people are coming in and out of our driveway, they pull into the driveway, we can put up our own signs that says private property. I mean, they're coming in all the time, they use that access in our own driveway. Yeah, I mean, if you cut a road, you're gonna ta, you're gonna come to our barn and to pretty much our property, people are gonna drive their trash all the time coming through there.
You might be misunderstanding what we're doing, we're trying to close this street, so we're not gonna put in a street there.
We don't wanna run it there.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
What are we vacating?
That's the whole, that's the whole deal, we wanna vacate it, get it to.
No, someone told us something different, we called up here and someone said they're gonna put a road access from Ash all the way around it, is what they said. Okay, I'm so sorry, I very apologize, that's what they told us.
That's, that's, I'm glad you're here.
They told me to hold them totally wrong, that they wanna put that road so people could go through there.
We were chasing people out of their.
Is your intent at some point to fence this?
Yeah, I'm thinking of, we wanna put another, new roof and whatnot, put some privacy. But I didn't wanna put it when I knew that that was a wire. My father had to give up Eastman, the syrup line of high school to go through the backyard. And that fence back there's not my property wire, I just put it there because we have a pool in the backyard. So it goes from road, but I can't put the fence on that side because I have to provide Eastman through equipment to syrup line and all the utility.
So is your pool fence?
No, it's, it's fence, but we filled that in, it was in such disrepair when I bought the house back in 2003, it was cheaper to fill it in than it was to.
Well, we were, someone told us the total opposite, we were like, no, we don't want another road up there.
We got fox, deer, and little things running around, and we like it, it's quiet.
What are you doing about it, are you just quiet?
Man, it's gonna be nothing, not a lot of kids from the high school going through there. And what was nice and kind of scenic won't be scenic anymore.
Yeah, there was.
So if we vacate means the city would no longer own it, so.
Right, what would do? What it would do is it splits that in half, so it's just the nature how it works, so the north half technically goes to the school district. Are they gonna clear if you put a fence out there? And then the other, the south half would be split between you and Mr. Woods.
What we're doing now?
This just makes sense.
There's also your property in 1643.
Yeah, we thought that, they know this.
This is all on property.
My name is Mike Woods.
And Mike, where do you live?
Well, I live in Chestnut, I'm the owner of the duplex right there. 1645 North 13th.
Why can't you fill that?
Oh, well, I'm the one that went to Josh, I'm the one that went to Josh requesting it. Because, and the main reason is that carport is on city property from the previous owner. I'd rather just get it cleaned up, you know, to me, if possible.
Any comments from the audience regarding this issue?
I think you guys are dressed up, we're good.
We close the public hearing.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Your motion for closing the public hearing, any further comment?
I wanna clarify, Josh, that little thin strip is gonna be split even thinner, and the school district is gonna, I mean, how wide is that?
I think that was 15, I think it was 30 feet.
So it's about 15. It's gonna get 15, and you guys are gonna get 15. But it didn't get all the way, I mean, you're not taking over all the way to the ball field.
No, the tree line is like a body line.
You won't be on the towel.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, they have a statement, five. Opposed. Okay, our public hearing is closed. Do we have a?
I'm hoping that we close, that we, they vacate Ash Avenue, I mean, those things.
Any further discussion? Should be a roll call, that's a roll call, though?
Yes. Lloyd Colston? Chris Johnson? Cody Richardson? Dottie Smith? And Tom Wheatley? We'll move that to the next step. Probably the first meeting in April is when we will actually take it to the city commission. First Tuesday.
Comprehensive plan, thank you, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, thank you all.
Well, I'm glad we were able to.
Take it all, put a road in there, I'm like, do that?
Thank you, few times.
So I wanna make this pretty quick, but I did wanna take a few moments just to talk about where we're at with the comprehensive plan. We are supposed to review it every year, we haven't done a great job of that in the past, so I'm gonna try to make things a little different this, this time around. And so I'm not proposing that we actually make any amendments, but I did just wanna give you my updates, and we can kind of talk about it if you want to. But it has been a year since we adopted it, it was back in March, so we are at a year, and we've made some, some progress on a few different things. So I was just gonna break it down by topics. So housing, we pretty much, all the goals in the section are ongoing, that's gonna be a thing that's not gonna end anytime soon. One specific item of note is that we are currently working on developing a housing plan for the 101 acres. I actually have a meeting with PEC who we're working with on Friday to discuss that first round of things. And just to let you know, there's gonna be a couple of meetings, probably this body is gonna be who's gonna hold them. And we'll have a public hearing adopting it as a, as an area plan. So that will all come through here, so you'll get to see it, and you'll get to have your comments on it, just like anybody else will. So I wanted to let you, give you an update on that property. Economic development, oh, I guess I should tell you one more housing project, there is a housing project that's also going to go in, Sleep Edition. Just so you were aware of that one, it is a kind of a multifamily, but they're using Skyline Homes.
Are they moving in that with them?
Yeah, last I heard, they had, I think they had some, they weren't able to get the financial finish that they wanted, I think they were going for tax credits or something. And they weren't able to get those, but they told the city manager that they are still wanting to go ahead and do anyways with their home, but so that, as far as I know.
Does that decrease the amount of units they're gonna go with?
I don't think so, they hadn't indicated that, so. Somewhere in the 40s is what they're shooting for down there. So economic development, those actions are also ongoing, we've actually seen quite a bit of development recently. Most recently, the scooters, of course, just moved in relatively recently. Starbucks is going to be going in where the bowling alley was taken down. Depends on, everybody has their own opinion, but it is what it is. The truck stop at the roundabout should be starting hopefully in April, they're still kind of wrapping up their final approvals with the states, so. They've got their permit, they're just waiting on one last thing before I can actually give them green light.
So there's some issues with the sewer line?
They didn't have any issues with it, this was, this is related to their drainage, there's, they have to file a time of the state.
There's something about crossing the railroad right away and all that.
Yeah, that's in the city's court right now, as far as I know, everything's going to find that. It'll, it'll definitely be ready for them for the, I don't think the project started yet, but.
About the Country Mart slash car wash?
That is also still headed in that direction. Haven't heard much from them really recently, but they are still, that first phase is kind of what they're doing inside the Country Mart building, that storage thing that they're gonna do inside there.
Are they really talking about another car wash?
This is a car wash, if you've seen, they have one down in Palm City. Yeah, it's one of, it's one of. Do we need one? I don't. There's obviously a demand for it, because they wouldn't be seeing it. And then the other project that's gonna eventually come around, we did a rezon for them, a couple years ago, I think, at Lincoln School, the Community Health Center of Galway County is moving ahead with plans to redevelop that school. They will retain the school's identity and.
Do they own that now?
Yeah, they've owned it for.
Do you have an idea of scarps names?
On that, I don't really know, but it probably will be this summer. It should, we should see a lot of movement this summer. It'll be busy in my office.
At this point, we're hearing rumors of nothing, nothing really concrete on that car wash, just more of the Dylan's, you hear anything that's happening there?
That, last I heard, that's still going to be redeveloped, not as a car wash, it'll, it'll be closed. There's only one last car wash that would be replaced by that.
So what do you hear that it would be developed then?
What do I hear? Last I heard, it's not really public knowledge, but I'll say it anyways, it's supposed to be at the Dylan's Fuel Center.
I hope so.
Say that again, please.
The Dylan's Fuel Center. So the next topic that's in the plan is parks and rec. Still working on, I believe there was a goal in there about developing the Paris Park area, dealing with the pool, that sort of area. There's still talk of a so-called Recplex. I don't know where we stand on that, because when the new school board was elected, they pumped the brakes. So I don't know where we actually stand on that project, but the city's still interested in it, and the recreation mission is still interested in it. I don't know where that's gonna go, but there's still pushes for that, and of course, obviously, we're still got ongoing plans to deal with the pool in some manner. But it's, that's put on hold because of all of that. Also, as part of that master plan for the 101 acres, they'll look at parks and recreation in that area. If that gets fully developed, there's gonna be a little bit of an need for some sort of open space there. And so they'll be looking at that, that'll be a part of that as well. Also, related to this, a grant was awarded to the city to improve Levy Watson Park. They're going to do some, I think they were gonna look at a canopy, maybe another shelter. I don't remember where exactly we ended up with that, but. Yeah, I think that was actually dollars to them. We were, we were trying to get a grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's what this grant was, to help us with the trails. Well, that just keeps being pushed off over and over and over again. And so we went back to them, because they already pretty much earmarked funds for us, and we kind of relooked at what we could use it for. And so that park was identified as a park that needed some, some help, since, since it's Blue Cross, it's a public health grant. And so the park has actually been made tobacco-free as a result of that, so there is a public health aspect to that. So they, that, the commission did approve that, so technically you are not supposed to smoke when you're at that park, rest of the parks, that's a whole other place, but there it is. It's a little bit of a formality. Most that's probably gonna happen is a police officer might say, hey, you can't do that here, but they're not gonna take it. It's just not that kind of a regulation, so. But at any rate, they're trying to promote that, of course, the walking trail around it was active lifestyle, so that's what was going on, that was the whole point of that. Let's see, infrastructure, the city implemented a new stormwater fee structure, I believe that was actually maybe one of our goals that was identified, that's been done, it's actually been replaced. Yeah, we did one thing. And the finance director, even after the first month, is like, wow, this is really gonna make a big difference in that fund, which will make it easier to put funds towards repairing our storm sewers, and also help us with the levees. We're in the middle of a, of a process right now of recertifying our levees. If we were not, if we were to lose certification, we would basically not have levees officially according to FEMA, so everything would revert back to what it's. Obviously, we're not looking at that, we wanna recertify it, so there's a cost there, we're working with, with a firm that's stepping through that. They'll all let us know if we need to modify the levees, whether we need to, I mean, maybe even as much as raise them in some places.
And speaking of the levees, on one of my trips to Oklahoma, I saw a vehicle parked with a levee with a occupant on the other side. Is that part of this that we're talking about, or is that something I should be concerned about?
For the most part, it is something you probably should be concerned about. Now, I say that, but yes, they are in the area and they will be on there, but for the most part.
Nobody's supposed to, it did not appear to be a, a vehicle that were.
It's JEO consulting to the company, so if you see a truck there, look for them. So that could be just a citizen, which is not supposed to happen. If you see a citizen on the levee, I would encourage you to, because they're damaging it. I know as a kid, I.
I think he was just checking if the levee was dry.
No, they're driving their Chevy. So anyways, that, that has been put in place. Also, as part of that, we may gain a staff member, I don't know where that stands, but that was one of the ideas, was to get a staff member that would assist with or stormwater management, so they're looking not only at helping, you know, keep the levees and stuff like that in, in good shape, but also checking like our construction sites, checking to make sure that erosion control and all that stuff is happening too, so. I don't know where we're standing with that, but again, that was supposed to happen as well, it might maybe be the next year. As far as water and sewer, there's some ongoing studies and plans that are in works. Just this past year, finally, one of the downtown sewer lines was replaced, that had been deep for many years, and back the, the alley was caving in because in some spaces. So that's all been repaired and repaved, and it's in pretty shape in the downtown area. There's also some other projects, well, Brad Meek was also a recent water project that got. City's always looking for ways to get grants to assist, so we can carry, stretch things a little bit further, so far, we haven't had a whole lot of luck, because that's difficult, those grants are very expensive. But we're going to continue to pursue those, for the most part, though, we can do these projects with our, the rates that we have. So that's already been factored in, there is still a water study, a rate study going on, I don't believe, it's, it's still there. On the street side, the city commission is actively studying the sales action initiative again. And that's supposed to be for street and sidewalk repairs. There are also, one of the things they're wanting to do is purchase some more equipment, so that some of these repairs of sidewalks anyways can be done in-house. That should save the city a lot of money and allow them to do more. Now, that's not going to help our brick streets, I don't know what, what our long-term plan is with brick streets, but this would help the ones that have asphalt.
Do you have a list, years ago, we did have sales tax initiative that was passed? And we had a list, I was a commissioner, we had a list of what would be done with that money. Do you have a list of that? And what was completed over?
On that one? Yeah, on that one, West Kansas Avenue from Summit to 15th was one that was done. And it was, it was completed. 15th from Kansas to Radio Lane was also on there. It was, was put into this new concrete, so that one was done. And then the other one that was on there was Skyline between Summit and Gate. That one was also done, and that was paired with an economic development grant, which actually upgraded all of the streets all the way around. Top of the river park, so 8th Street north of 8th Street, 8th Street north of Skyline, the off-road, and then 61st was also that.
On that list were also some of the side streets, like First, et cetera.
I think so, and that those were not there. I think there was like First Street over here, Brick Street, I think was supposed to be. That was not there. And I don't know, to be honest, I don't know what happened there, I think they just ran.
Some money was sidetracked.
Possibly. But yes, those, this one, I, I don't know exactly what they're planning to do, but I believe they're gonna be doing some of those public open houses again. And they'll talk about what. But the main one is getting that piece of equipment to help with that, some of those mill over there, the side streets. Let's see, and then community health was another topic. Again, the public health grant was awarded at Levy Watson, so there's some of that going on. There's always a tobacco-free push in the community, it's never been followed through on, but there, it's still there, there's still interest in it.
It worked, I quit smoking 48 years ago.
And again, that health center is supposed to be going in. And when we rezoned that, one of the reasons that we looked at that site was that there's not a whole lot of options for people up in South End of Town. There's certainly not a walkie business for them, so this would help them out a little bit. It tends to be the lower income side of town is also this area. And so they also, they have a sliding scale that they use. Then you can go up to the one in, in Phil today, but that means you gotta get there. So this, this gives Arcitians, especially the South End Arcitians, a place to go.
There's like, protection, the bus, type people, where they need to go.
There is still, there's like payed out funded, Cali County area, I don't know. Yes, there is a, a bus or a van that goes, you have to do in advance, you gotta call them in advance. But yes, there is an option for people to adopt. And I think they did more than grocery stores, I think.
Is that publicized enough? I mean, I don't know, but I would know how to get ahold of them.
I think the best way to get ahold of them right now is through the, that area agency, I think, downtown. And they stay promoted, of course.
And that really needs to be publicized more and utilized more. I make trips to Oklahoma, one of my trips to Oklahoma, I saw a deal for a bus just like that. That the tribe is supporting, and tribal members get 50 cent rides one way, it's $3 to everybody else. So it's cheap, but you have to plan.
Yeah, this is not like a bus route. It's not intended to be that, didn't have that level, but you gotta plan. Now, we did, we did, I think, have something in the, I think there was a goal related to studying public transportation as well. So that is probably something that we can look at, at least giving a word out that, hey, this is available. And as far as I know, anybody can use that service. It's not like, it's not disabled and elderly only.
And when I first moved here, I thought it was disabled, but it's not.
Yeah.
I don't, I might sell more.
I don't know about the cost, I don't think that there is a cost to it.
I think there is.
Is there a cost to it?
It's, it's pretty cheap, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's pretty cheap, and they will take you where you wanna go, and you tell them like, you wanna be picked up, they'll pick you up. I haven't used, used it, it was nice to know.
Absolutely.
But they're not gonna take you to the store.
Yeah. No, you're gonna have to talk to Uber. There, there is present, there is some right share here in town. So there are people that will do that.
I'm not, I'm not Uber, but I'm your friend.
And again, as far as activity, there still is that Recplex up in the air. That's still, that's what's up.
And speaking of Recplex, I have heard of plants, and I'm in favor of plants, because from, from my enjoyment, I go to Palm Cities to swim in the indoor pools and enjoy the indoor walking track. It's not convenient, but it's better. It's just the Recplex in Palm.
And I think that's kind of the idea, is mimicking what they have, that's one of the things that looking at.
And I look at Amtrak coming and anything that makes sense for us.
I guess I, I should have said something about Amtrak too, and when I was talking about transportation. We will have to make improvements to the, the station here, because it's not easily, totally accessible, so there's, the city is going to have to do something, Amtrak's not gonna fund that. Or we have to look at building a separate building. Hopefully, BNSF is willing to open up at least enough of their station there, that, that we can use that as our base.
It looks like that BNSF would partner with us to build the money to, for example. But I think that at least, minimum, be speared up a whole lot.
Yeah.
Who owns that building?
The BNSF does.
They own the building?
Yeah. So it'll be up to them, which probably means that the city or some entity, I don't, probably the city, will have to pay at least of some sort. It's just the nature of it. And then the last topic is land use. Has you, well, Chris may not be aware of this, but we went through after we did the comprehensive plan and we redid the regulations. So we, we met what was asked in the comprehensive plan, that, that's the one topic that we for sure got through. The changes so far have been pretty big, so haven't had any issues with that. I don't, I don't recommend any further changes to zoning regulations or subdivision regulations this time. I think we did a pretty decent job.
What happened with the property that needed to be released or died of something done, with somebody? Remember we dealt with it?
It was below the flood.
Oh. Well, they never did anything to that property. So what, what I finally came up with and the state agreed with this, is we filed an affidavit against the property alongside the deed. And so basically, it'll be a kind of a cloud thing, if they ever try to sell the property, that's gonna come up. And the buyer, the bank, potentially will not be very interested in giving a mortgage on a property that has that on it. So that's the only, that was the final straw, is basically unshave the, the owner. It's not the greatest thing, because technically it's still in violation. But that, that satisfied the state. So while it's still, again, it's still below where it's supposed to be, it's, it's been resolved for our purposes. And we're still looking at the remapping of that area, we talked about that, it came up at that public hearing. That they're looking at remapping all of it. And it could be that that changes and it becomes compliant. So for the most part, I've never seen flooding, I don't know any community members even that have heard of flooding that would get high enough in that area to flood that house, because it's built up as it is, a couple of feet. And usually what you see is six to 12 inches of water. Because it's not flooding from the river directly, it's, 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 so you ground the water and trudy. So it is river water, but it, that's what happens, when the river comes up, the water comes up. Doesn't, doesn't drink.
They're inside the bank.
So it's not, it's not typical river flooding.
In Omaha or on a drought, like, like, the river rising is not an urgent threat.
Yeah. But in 2019, there was.
So I know people that their houses were flooded.
Well, what was the year that we called that flood, 98?
98 was the. That was because of the breach in the levee, because it was their construction.
The back of the seventy.
Well, I also, in the newspaper, earlier this year, towards the end of last year, it talked about the flooding that was in '23, '24, I'm fairing, that one wasn't. But that was before the levee was in place. So like the whole South End of Town, basically the other side of the canal, we would have probably been real close to it. Where we are today, it would have been pretty high. That was in the twenties.
Nineteen. Seventy-three was probably flooded.
And then, and then 2019 was that weird, it's mostly that kind of flooding where it was coming up. And especially if the South End of Town was coming up under the levee. Like they had a lot of levee or flooding at the Cali Track. And they had no idea they were in public, they're not, they're not mapped in the public. So that, that may change, they may be in the public. Same thing with the apartment complex that's on South Six. That side of that was the hub. But that drainage ditch right in front of them, it was getting full. And, and Veterans Lake rises into the river. And it was, it actually damaged the dock that was there, it came up that high, they rebuilt all that. But yeah, that rose about as high as it ever seemed. It probably was high in this, in 98, it was probably high in seventy-seven, but. Reasonable, that was pretty hard. That's all I have, unless anybody has something that they want to discuss about the plan. We're done, just new cover sheet. This is. Oh, you need the updated cover sheet? And couple's way out of date. This is the one we used when it was got for.
Gosh, my book is thinner than everybody else's. And I was at the same, I was at the meetings.
What'd you do, eat it?
I'm gonna give you a book.
Yeah, I don't understand how you didn't have one that was still. Well, we'll have to, we'll have to check into that, I don't know what. Yeah, I did get Chris one, and Duane will also have one.
What do you see for upcoming meetings in April, beginning of May?
I don't right now. Eventually, we'll have some stuff related to that master plan and stuff, but.
This year is April, beginning of April, I'll be in Oregon just for a few days. April 24th, May 8th, Oregon. September, San Diego, end of October, it's two weeks into November, is July.
That may be when we're somewhere in that area, is probably when we'll talk about that.
Wish it doesn't be me in the line. Get over there, I've got blood.
I want to add two things to our discussion. Thing one, speaking of health, health is seeing a rise in children and lead together. If you have loved ones who have children, have grandchildren, have neighbors, tell them that the health department, the government, has been for children at no cost. And my point about the levee, we don't think about this. There are critical infrastructures in our city and critical infrastructures in our county. Homeland security is stressed to the max of people who want to do bad stuff to us. And homeland security has to be right 100% of the time. And the person that wants to do bad for us only has to be right once. So if you see something, say something.
Yeah, just like we're talking.
Do you have anything else?
Move your journal.
We have a second.
Second, yes.
Can we talk for a bit?
Merry Christmas, everybody.